Thank you. Turn this back on. Good evening, I call to order the Monroe Public School Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, the time is 7:02. Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams. Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. We stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to the revised approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I need to make some changes.
Oh, you need to make some changes.
Yep. So, uh...
Get your glasses on.
So here we go. Uh, first, we do need to add B3M CTE suburban purchase to the agenda. I'd also request that we remove new business I Fleet Management.
I also have some I would like...
Wait, which one are we removing? I'm sorry.
We're removing I Fleet Management. And then we're adding B3M CTE suburban purchase.
I don't even see I. Do you see I?
Yeah, on the second page here.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Oh, because you're taking it out of the course.
Just before old business, okay.
So we're taking I off.
And I'm hoping I have my numbers correct. I'd like to pull 3A. The food service. 3D envision. 3E board policy. And 3L, all for further work session, um, discussion.
Is that your motion, Darla? Would you...
No.
Would you also want to pull J, the companion to L?
Okay, do we need to add Andy's I?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. And you were a J? Okay, so we're pulling... I'm gonna go down through and tell me if I've missed one, let me know, okay?
You guys keep me going here.
All right.
3A.
3A.
Which is the food service. 3D envision. 3E board policies. 3I, I don't have that, what is that? Fleet management. 3J is...
Except administrative contracts.
And 3L.
I think the original, first time you said E, is that still in there?
E is board policy, yes.
No, E would be pulled under that. Pulled off?
Yeah.
Okay.
A, D, E, I, J, and L.
A, D, E, I, J, and L.
Okay. I'll support that.
Is there any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Would you like to amend to my motion?
You want to pull? I don't know if...
It's not pulled as of right now.
Okay.
Is that part of...
No. No, it's not part of anything. It's not a companion to anything. But it's up to...
Does anybody want amendment to that?
Do you want to take that off carry? Oh, okay.
Anybody else?
I'm fine.
Okay. We'll stay with the original motion.
Okay.
Clear vote on this motion?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
No.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
No.
Mrs. Williams.
No.
Mr. Zimmerman.
No. But I have no idea whether we pass or whether we stay.
We don't have an agenda approved so far.
Okay, so that failed. All right.
So we still do not have an agenda approved?
Not approved.
Not as of yet. So where do we go from here?
New motion.
Someone needs to make a new motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. What's your motion?
I move to approve the agenda as written except for taking off the management. We continue looking at that contract.
Is there support?
Which one was that, then?
That was I.
That's removing I.
So taking off I?
Yep. And the original request was to add CTE purchase, B3M for that vehicle.
That's not in the motion, though, right?
That's not in the motion, correct?
No.
I can add to the motion. That is the fleet vehicle through the highway.
Yeah, that's... Good.
Take off I and add M. That's my motion.
Is there support? We have a roll call, Jamie.
Uh, can I do discussion first?
Oh, sure.
So are we adding CTE with that amendment?
That's M.
Okay. And removing I. Okay. Thank you.
So let's make sure we're clearing the motion. We're removing I and we're also putting on B3M, which is the CT suburban purchase, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. Any more discussion? Can we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Support.
Mr. Heck.
No.
Mrs. Myers.
No.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
No.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. Okay, so we have an agenda.
We're doing well so far.
So far, so good. So does that take us to...
My comments.
All right. I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Shaw for Superintendent comments.
Wonderful. Well, let's look out there, all those bright faces. Hopefully that camera's turning, so it's off of up here, going back there. So in front of us tonight are all of our students that were able to make it, which you guys blew away last year's group of students. I thought, for sure, when I walked out there, I'd see five, okay? Not 20-some. So thank you for coming. Thank you, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, everyone for coming in tonight. So these are our scholarship winners this year, uh, that just are graduates. And so what we're gonna have each graduate do, and who wants to be their courageous one, just to be the one to go? Perfect, right here in the front. There you go, you got nominated. Step to the microphone.
She know you never sit in front.
There we go. I appreciate that so much. So what she is gonna do, you find your name on the list? So she's gonna announce the scholarship that she received. Just a little bit of word of information. $71,600 were given out in these scholarships. Now, this is just... The amazing and cool part, this was just the foundation scholarships, okay? So that doesn't mean anything that they received from their universities and/or from any other local scholarships that may have been given out. So $71,600 from our own scholarships right here. So, uh, so what's gonna happen now, students? She's gonna model how this works. So she's gonna talk about the scholarship she received and then what she's gonna do this next fall. So then the next person will come and just kind of roll it right on through. Uh, but before you go, and I know I'm making you stand there with that camera pointing ready to see that camera. Right on you. And I appreciate that, that make it coming both. That is awesome. It is that, uh, but first and foremost, thank you, parents and grandparents, everyone for coming and bringing our students here tonight. Uh, it is an exciting time. Uh, this is the last event unless you still have to go do your grad party. So students, how many of you still need to do a grad party? Cool. How many of you are helping your parents put the grad party together? There we go, I love it. We only saw three hands. All right, so you're up, little lady.
Okay. Um, hello, my name is Rebecca Pace, and I received the Earl and Elise Scholarship. Um, I plan on going to Jackson College, studying business administration, playing soccer, and working in an insurance office.
That is awesome.
Hi, I'm Avery Roberts. Um, I received the Horvath Scholarship, and I plan on going to Mercy College of Ohio in the fall to pursue a career in nursing.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Yeznak. I received the Horvath Scholarship and the Earl and Elise Scholarship, and I plan to attend CMU in the fall for vocal music education to be a choir teacher.
Fire up chips.
Hi, my name is Brendan Miller, and I received the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship, the Earl and Elise Scholarship, and the Custer PTO Scholarship. And this fall, I'm going to Central Michigan University, majoring in fashion design.
Awesome. Fire up chips again, look at that.
Hi, I'm Alana Olf. I got the Memorial Scholarship, and I am going to Michigan State next year for nursing.
Hi, I'm Arabika, and I got the McIntyre Scholarship and the Earl and Elise, and I plan to go to Michigan State for marketing.
Hi, my name is Victoria Blonyash. I got the Earl and Elise Scholarship, the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship, and the Waterloo Scholarship, and I plan to go to Grand Valley to study business management.
Hi, I'm Lily Zilgit. I got, um, the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship, and I go, I'm planning on going to MSU to major in apparel and textile design.
My name is Ashley Smith. I got the MPS Scholarship, and I plan on going to Lord's University to major in marketing and sports management and being a part of their sideline and competitive cheer team.
I'm Mallory Standifer. I got the Earl and Elise Scholarship and the Wydenborn Scholarship, and I'm going to Saginaw Valley to study occupational therapy.
Hi, I'm Emily Casey. I got the Gert Scholarship, the Earl and Elise Scholarship, and the Wendleborn Scholarship. And this fall, I'm going to the University of Toledo to go to pharmacy school.
My name is Kate Stevenson. I got the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship, the Earl and Elise Scholarship, and the Earl and Elise Scholarship, and I plan to go to the Monroe County Community College to study psychology.
Hi, my name is Ally Pitcher, and I got the Sean Brady Memorial Scholarship, Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship, and the Earl and Elise Scholarship, and I plan on going to Michigan Technological University for electrical engineering.
Hi, my name is Adam Bosney. I've got the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship, and I'm going to BGSU for software engineering.
Hi, my name is Max Adams. I got the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship, and I'm gonna be going to Ashland University for honors finance and then cross-country and track.
Hi, I'm Chris Stein. I got the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship, and I'm going to U of M for electrical engineering.
Hi, my name is Hope Younglove. I got the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship. I'm gonna be attending U of M to study movement science.
Hi, my name is Logan Loveland. I got the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship. Next fall, I'm gonna attend Bowling Green University, where I will study sales and business.
Hi, my name's Navia Hall, and I got the Earl and Elise Scholarship, and I'll be going to University of Toledo to study cosmetic science.
Hello, my name is Dalton Clark, and I got the Mary Kay Kosa Scholarship and the June Heck Scholarship. I plan to go to the University of Olivet to study chemistry.
Hi, I'm Sarah Whistler. I got the Earl and Elise Scholarship, and I plan on going to the University of Toledo for graphic and interactive design.
Truly a dynamic, uh, group of students right there. Uh, a couple other pieces of stats. Uh, there were 20 scholarships given out that were worth $2,000 each. And another really amazing stat is we have three Spartans. Yay, great job Spartans.
And one U of M person?
Two going to U of M, and I feel bad because I know that does divide one house. But he'll do a great job there. Uh, but I'm really excited for those that are going to the Great White North. Enjoy all the snow, my nephew goes there, so have fun. And, uh, Tom Heck was up there for a year.
One year.
And so, and then, uh, but I really amaze and impressed though with the variety of schools and locations you guys are all going to. You know, heading over the west side of state, up to northern Michigan, heading out of state, uh, and so courageous, courageous, courageousness. And so I end with this part right here. Know that, uh, we love you guys here and are here for you, and, uh, go do great things, and know that if you ever need anything, just come back and we're here to support you. And so truly appreciate everybody for coming tonight. I know that Wendy is gonna snag a picture out in the front yard by the sign, so if our students can have it that way, and one last round of applause for all their great work. At the end right here, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna get that picture, I think, somewhere up here. Yeah. So we'll make sure. Angela. Angela.
Yes, sir.
So when do we have that?
You want to take our picture now?
No, when do you want that? Oh, at the end? Okay.
We can do it at the end.
We'll do it at the end? Okay. I appreciate that, man.
Why don't you wanna do it now? But here's what's funny. Jen, what's in your purse?
Oh, no! Oh, it's ready to go!
The middle school flocks together.
Oh, that is awesome.
Don't know when we're gonna need it. You don't. If you see a middle schooler, teacher, staff member, you're gonna see a flamingo this year.
Oh, my goodness. Action photos. So... Thank you. All right. Um, the only, the last item I do have for my comments, because the kids did a phenomenal job. Uh, next Monday night at 6 o'clock in our front conference room, uh, our board president, myself, will be hosting an opportunity for anyone that wants to, uh, run for the Board of Ed that wants to know more about what it means to be a board member. We're offering that opportunity for people, so that will be in the weekend review, and we'll put that out there for anyone that wants to. But we wanted that opportunity so that people could have, uh, come in and just ask questions, uh, because those timelines are approaching. And so that opportunity sits there. So this coming Monday, 6 o'clock in the front conference room. That's all I have for that, this session.
All right, public commentary, Darla? Do we have anyone for board agenda items only?
No, we don't.
All right. That moves us down to, next one, what's it called? For our contracts and services, resignations, retirement reports. Is there any discussion on that for all of our retirees? Uh, let's see, on our service contracts or anything like that?
I think there were like 17 total, um, retirements and resignations, yeah.
So we will turn it over to...
Consent agenda?
We are...
We got to do consent.
We're here.
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, what's the matter? Somebody goofed you off up here?
No, don't, don't do me again, please. Reports?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 that's pre-... Stop, now you're getting me all goofed up. Where am I?
It was done.
See, wait, it was your page two, ain't the same as my page two.
His won't be because you have all these.
Oh, all right. So now we're in consent. Okay. Now we're here.
Okay.
Consent, so there's no one? There's no one?
No, none of our retirees are there.
Okay.
They're enjoying their retirement.
Amen.
Do we want to remove anything off of the present? Oh, we're good. Get removed off consent agenda. So then what are we doing?
Approving consent agenda.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items?
I...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I, I move to, um, accept the, um, consent agenda pulling 2D and 2E. D, which is the MHSAA, and, um, E, the soccer skills camp.
Hang in.
For further discussion.
You said D and E?
D and E. And approve the rest, um, as stated.
I'll support that.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah. Can we ju... Can I, can I ask for context why?
Yeah, sure. On the, um, membership for the MHSAA, there's been a lot of changes. Um, we, there's regu... There's two different options that you can choose. There's a one and a two. Um, one's optional, one's mandatory, um, and I believe there were eligibility requirement changes. So we didn't get to see any of, anything changed on that. I looked at the paperwork we got, none of that was listed in there. So I wanted an opportunity to find out what was all of those changes before I vote on it.
But I think a consent agenda, don't we vote on that and decide if we pulled off?
That's what I thought, but...
Yeah, it'll still be discussed. Yeah, because it's done on the business, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll discuss that later.
In new business, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Just remind me, because, boy, this has been a...
I do have a couple of questions. No, not pulling, hang on.
Okay.
I thought we're under discussion.
We are, we are in a discussion.
We can't discuss. It's a consent agenda with two items pulled, and if you would like to amend that and ask for any to be pulled... Not on a consent agenda.
Not on that?
That is just whether you want...
But you can pull it, and then it goes to new business when you talk about it.
And then we can discuss it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah. So what numbers do you have questions on?
Uh, just on the soccer skills and the upward bound.
So that is...
That's E.
2D, E, and you said upward bound?
Yeah.
F. So I'll make an amendment to the motion and move to approve the consent agenda, uh, pulling items 2D, 2E, and 2F for further discussion and approve the rest as suggested.
Is there support for that motion?
Yeah, support.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I just wanna make sure that that consent agenda is also inclusive then of CTE, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not inclusive.
Have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes. Wait, let me ask one question real quick. Did you mention the CTE?
That's in, that's somewhere else.
Yeah, that's still on.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep...
Yeah, oh, I understand.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. And the motion passes. So it takes us down to new business. Does that automatically drop us to D, E, and F? All right. So who would like to start with, being you did it, Darla? I'll let you start, how's that?
So the first item is MHSAA 2024-2025 membership renewal.
So when I... Oh, sorry. When I went through the paperwork, and I do know there are eligibility requirements that have changed, um, I know that there are two pathways you can take. There's a, uh, I think it's called regulat... What is it? Regulatory one and regulatory two. One is mandatory under whatever the terms of that are. Number two are optional, and I don't know what is included anymore in one or two. So, um, and then the eligibility requirement changes. I just wanted to see that in writing before I approved, um, my support on it.
So, yeah, please come up to the mic since you're here tonight, which is wonderful. Last, uh, huge act.
Thank you, John, for being here.
You get to talk afterwards. Look at that. Anyway.
So let me talk about the one I know the most about, and that's the eligibility requirement. Are you talking about the eligibility for athletes to be able to participate?
Yes.
So they have a very, 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 very lenient academic standard. You must pass 66.7% of your classes and get a .6F.
What's a .6F?
It's a D minus.
Oh, seven.
Your grade point average.
Monroe Board of Education voted years ago to have a 1.8. So that's what we work under. There's some talk about that's kind of strict. I talked to Jackson this week, and there's a 2.0. There's schools that, that go by the passing four out of six or five out of seven, and, um, and they don't have that GPA requirement. So that's what that is. The other one is, is that understand that it doesn't cost us anything to belong to the MHSAA. But it does allow us to participate in sports for after-season, for tournaments. Our coaches that take the exams and are required to are covered under a blanket liability policy. There's a whole bunch of cool stuff. And the MHSAA makes their money through all the games that you go to for the tournaments and things, and then they have sponsorships for like Wilson Balls and Baden for volleyball and those sorts of things. And it's a healthy organization. They've done extremely well for themselves. I could hand you the book, Larry, and you would have to hire a lawyer on top of you being a lawyer to understand what the book says. It's really, really, really complicated.
You and I together, though, John, could probably...
We could do it.
So Darla, what was that, your first question?
So those, I understand all of that, and I wasn't questioning the benefits that can become from the association. I always just want to make sure when I vote something, I know what I'm voting on, and I know there have been a lot of law changes, and those law changes can be implicated. We went to, was it the ISD that gave a speech about how Elliot Larson and some of those components are gonna be affecting sports, um, in the state of Michigan? Am I misquoting that, whoever was there? Um, so I'm assuming that's coming through the MHSAA primarily, um, and if that's the case, I just want to know that upfront. And I want to know if we're on path one or two, and it's, what is it, the regulatory path? There's two options. I don't even know which one we're...
I can't, I don't even know.
I would like this to have been part of a work session, so we can have asked some of these questions. We could have asked Dr. Ray to get some of those answers for us, so that we know what's coming up down the road, and we put our signature on it, we know what we're voting for. So I would like this to have been under a work session.
Do you want to make that motion or...
Yeah, I would like to make, um, the motion to move the MHSAA for the 24-25 membership renewal and move that into a work session so that we can... and move that into a work session, so that we can further discuss it.
I would support that, and I, if Dr. Ray is free, I'd like to have...
I'll have, I'll have Dr. Hessen up to speed. Are you talking about the stance for boys playing girls' sports and girls playing boys' sports?
That's part of it.
So let me tell you, I know their stance.
Who's stance?
MHSAA's.
Okay.
MHSAA says that a boy can play in a girl's sport, but they can't play in a state tournament, providing the local school board of education pays their approval.
So that's why I think it's up for further discussion, so we can all get on the same page and understand what we're voting on.
I think there's more even in that than just that subject right there.
I would, I'd agree with you. I did do a little search on this.
Any more discussion?
No, that's great.
Jamie, roll call, please.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hux.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us down to Monroe High School Boys Soccer Skill Camp.
Since I brought this up too, when, there was three different, and correct me if I'm wrong, three different trips, I think, that were, were listed in the packet. And this was one of them. And there are, I believe if I read it right, there's sixty students going. Currently, in the paperwork, there is listed only one chaperone. So that is twenty to one on the paperwork that's been submitted. And if I can find my notes real quick, the upward, no, it's twenty to one, I'm sorry. There were twenty students, and it was one chaperone listed. Then upward bound had sixty students, ten staff, that's a ratio of six to one, six to one. The other one was twenty to one, and the HOSA is a three to two ratio. So I was just trying to understand how the ratios are a twenty to one on that trip with the paperwork submitted.
So I'm going to ask Dr. Ray to come back up. Have we had, when it comes to, this is, I'm going to go on a limb that says this is not the first time that our soccer coach has taken our boys' soccer team to a camp.
It's not a problem with them going, it's the ratio.
But he's going to explain, though...
So I talked to Ian about this, and he's going to, he's going to have, he's trying his best to get other people to go with him. Coach Cook is not, Coach, Coach Cook is not part of the camp. He's there to...
Right, I understand that.
He's there to get his kids there and let the college teach the kids. Coach Cook, and then there's a staff involved with the university where the kids are going to stay, and it's like an RA in a dorm, and so they'll be supervised. I know, everybody's working. You ask these people to take time out and...
So you would like to have more?
He would love to have more.
Okay.
He would love to have more.
I see he has TBA, so apparently...
Yeah, so we've discussed it. When I saw that, I said, hey, this could be a problem.
But if, if, according to what I read, they're taking private cars to get down there?
And you have all the paperwork and...
So you have drivers' parents driving them down?
The booklet's already in, everything's signed, everything's notarized. The deputies already signed off on all the parents. So, so when, so you know, when we take a trip, at beginning here, if, if, if we need parents to drive, they, they do an IT, they do an iChat on them.
Yeah.
They do an insurance check.
Okay.
They sign off, the deputy signs off. It comes over here for, for David to, to sign off on. So everybody's been vetted.
My question was liability, and if they got an insurance check, that's, that sounds good.
Yep, it's all, if, that's the only way a kid can drive with another parent, if the other parent says yes, and they've been vetted through us.
So my, my question's, so if you would like more, and it sounds like you and Mr. Cook would like more, and what would be the reason that you would want more if they're not needed? I'm just trying to understand what...
Just more than, it, he wants somebody else to go. You know, he really does. He doesn't feel he needs others, because it's so restricted. You know, they just don't turn these, these boys loose and let them, you know, have their...
I just know different camps have different policies on who's overseeing the students outside of the day of the, of the services. So if camp is, is from eight to five, then other people are responsible for the students from five until camp starts again. So I don't know what this camp is, I don't have a clue. I just saw those ratios, and I just didn't understand why other programs had different ratios.
I, I talked to Ian before I came to this meeting, I'll talk to him again tonight and ask him where he is with trying to get at least one other person.
But they can do it, John, with what they have, is what you're telling us?
Well, they can, because of the staff at Ashland.
That's what I figured. Because they're, they're going to Ashland University, right?
Yeah, it's not like they're all on a bus.
Right.
And by the way, we're not allowed to take them on a bus. That's one of the things you can't do. You can't put them in your team uniforms. You can't pay for them to go. There's a lot of things you can't do.
So when I suggested that the university was only responsible for them during the camp time, you're saying, no, the university is assuming responsibility from touchdown to takeoff?
Once, once we get them there to, and once we leave their campus, they're responsible for our kids.
Okay, okay. See, I wasn't aware of that, and it wasn't included in here. We didn't have a discussion on this prior to, but...
Yeah.
Thanks, Jan. Is any more discussion? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Monroe High School Boys Soccer Team in attendance at the Boys High School Soccer Team Skills Camp in Ashland, Ohio, following board policies for field trips and excursions.
Support.
Have roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hux.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to, that would be upward bound twenty-two forty-four enrichment trip.
I believe that was...
Yeah. Tom, you had a couple of questions there?
Um, if I recall right, I, I can't remember, it was earlier this year or last year, there was an issue with an upward bound employee that required, I think they removed him. But I just wanted to make sure that we've done the vetting of the employees that will be going along with this group.
Glad to speak to that. Thank you. We had multiple candidates for the position. Ran appropriate background checks and so forth, and we selected a wonderful person. If you don't mind introducing yourself really pretty quick. Do I need to come with the microphone?
Yeah, because we need the microphone.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Larry Smith Jr., and I'm the new Academic Skills Coordinator for Upper Bound, and I'll be working at Monroe High School.
Larry, if you wouldn't mind just real briefly your, your background and so forth, because quite impressive and also required background checks.
Yes, sir. So I'm born and raised from Toledo, Ohio. Went to Toledo Central Catholic High School. Went on to St. Joseph College in Rensselaer, Indiana, for Division Two football. Came back home. I worked for Lucas County Welfare Department, ZF Center, and New Concepts, which is a nonprofit organization for behavioral health. I work for Toledo Public Schools as well, as an attendance champion, where we go out and check on the kids' attendance that's not going to school. And I recently, before I came here, I was working at another behavioral health for elementary as well.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dick, answer your questions, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
I'll move that we approve the upward bound twenty-two forty-four cultural enrichment trip to Philadelphia, according to terms and conditions of all board policies.
Say support?
Support.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Hux.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Absolutely, and thank you.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. All right, before we move in, well, we've already moved into our new business, so we're just going to pass right on past that. Next, you know what? I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Shook for the twenty-two forty-four, twenty-five Food Service Management Contract.
Thank you, President Zimmerman. Tonight, we are asking the board to move to award the Food Service Management Company contract to SEDEXO for the twenty-two forty-four, twenty-two-five school year. It should be noted that state law allows the district to extend the Food Service Management Company contract for up to an additional four years without formally rebidding. Now, this approval is just for this one year. Should we choose to execute any of those one-year extensions, that would be a motion that would come before the board around this time, probably next year.
Okay. Any discuss, oh, don't, made a motion.
I'm moved to approve the food service contract for an additional year.
Support.
Is there any discussion?
Question, if I remember right, Cassie, there was some pending state approval?
Yes, the state did provide an email, and I believe Jamie passed around that document. It's right next to you. That they did indicate they approved what was submitted and permitted us to bring this before the board for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
So this is for one?
One year.
Yes, one year, okay. That was the reason I wanted to discuss it, anyway.
We have roll call, please, Jamie.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hux.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Carpet purchase, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, President Zimmerman. We're asking the board to approve the purchase of carpet for a cost not to exceed ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents from Runyon's Home Decorating of Monroe, Michigan, and this would be a site sinking fund purchase.
Can we get a motion?
I'm moved to approve the carpet purchase.
Does it support?
Support.
Any discussion?
This is the middle school, right? And all those other things listed in there?
No, this would be our yearly carpet, carpet, so Raisinville's getting four rooms, Orchard, Arbwood North.
You had that listed somewhere, I saw.
That's, the, the middle school would be the next agenda item for the furniture.
Okay, I knew I saw some stuff. You had given us all this information, oh, I thought so, yeah.
So it's page ninety-four?
Or ninety-three, or ninety, thirty, yeah.
Ninety-four is the listed...
Oh, I see what you're saying. Ninety-three also has.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Hux.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Furniture purchase, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. Our next item would be the following purchase of furniture for a cost not to exceed ninety-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and three cents from Wolverine Commercial Furnishings. Fund from this purchase would be, come out of our district general fund. And I can explain more details of what this purchase would entail, if you'd like.
Can we get a motion?
I'm moved to approve the furniture purchase.
Support?
I support.
Discussion?
This is for the front offices, right?
So there's two major, major components to this. The first one is a high school. So during the summer, we're doing a lot, a lot of bond renovations in the career center at the high school and the lower office area. So Mr. Plitzy asked if we could upgrade some of that furniture. It's aging, it's, some of it, you take it apart, it doesn't go back together quite right. So since we're putting all that money, and we thought this would be a good time to upgrade that furniture. The second portion is Room 107 at the middle school. Trying to consolidate staff into one area where there's places to work with students. And we looked at Room 107, and we do have some middle school people here, if you'd like to ask. It's a really great room. There's two, two rooms that can be closed on, that are already like mini offices. And this would allow us to add nine staff areas to work, up to nine if we choose. And then it would also come with a larger conference room for like IEPs, where you need to get six to ten people in a room. It'll allow a little bit of waiting area, and just give a nice office environment. Where, right now, we're putting one or two people in a classroom, now we're giving up that classroom. So we're trying to decentralize a way to free up some of those larger classrooms.
Now, I'm non-construction, and I'm non-furniture expert, but it appeared to be cubicles. And what was the stainless steel portion of it? Like, what was that talking about?
Stainless steel, I'm not sure. I have to look.
About steel case, that's a random furniture.
Oh. Here, I'm thinking you're making them out of steel, sorry.
No, no, it's, it's normal furniture, and it's similar to what we already purchased. So let's say in two years at the high school, when we change offices, we can remove that furniture and we reuse it.
I was thinking comfort, didn't sound too comfy.
Well, we did, you know, and I'll give kudos.
Yeah, I just don't know anything about it.
We did present this option, and we've worked with Mr. Malapsi and the, and the middle school staff. And kudos to them, as we did present a good, better, and best option. And they went with the, just the standard option, because they were, really want to gain space. So it's not about having the best, but it was about functionality. So we did try to go with the cheapest option we could find.
Well, I was thinking, just making sure that it's comfortable and it's usable, and people aren't going to be, I hate sitting on that furniture. So, you know, I wasn't thinking of going down and upgrade, I was looking at the opposite way.
And we did, we did...
One thing we asked for were comfortable chairs that people sat in daily. Like, the conference room table chairs could be a little less comfortable, but the chairs that they have at their workstations, we asked to be comfortable.
Yeah, because they were like five hundred dollars apiece, I think, so, yeah. I hope they're comfy.
If I may, David, Steel Case is famous for making furniture solutions which can adapt easily within a given classroom to different situations.
We read through, so we had...
I know nothing about it, yeah.
Three different companies come out and measure and go through multiple quotes, and I hope I never get into the furniture business, because...
Any more discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Absolutely. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Envision math purchase, Mr. Malapsi.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We asked to, we asked the board to move to approve a six-year purchase of the Envision math for grades six to twelve with a phased-in approach. For next school year will be six to eight Envision math and Envision Algebra I and Envision AP pre-calculus. Twenty-five, twenty-six adds Envision geometry at the high school. And then in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we will be full implementation with Monroe High School adding Algebra II. This purchase will be funded from the general fund curriculum budget at a total cost not to exceed five-hundred-thirty-three thousand dollars, four-hundred, or five-hundred thousand, excuse me. There's a lot of numbers here. Five-hundred-thirty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents with three-hundred-fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and nine cents due on July 1, 2024. And then ninety thousand, sixty-seven dollars and seventeen cents will be due on July 1, 2025. And ninety thousand, sixty-seven dollars and seventeen cents will be due on July 1, 2026 for the additional courses.
Can we get a motion?
Yep. Moved to approve the six-year purchase of the Envision math program as written.
You didn't want to do all the numbers?
Nope.
Is there any discussion?
And David, we know we don't say those numbers every day.
Not teachers out there judging me.
No, no judgment here.
Any discussion?
Couple of questions, Dave.
Do we have support?
Yes.
Is this replacing, this is replacing something, right?
This is replacing what the integrated model that the high school currently has with a phased-in approach. So we can't leave our students, I guess, hanging out there that have been through multiple years under the integrated model.
So we're saving some money by not renewing those programs, right?
Yes.
You have a rough idea how much you're saving there?
I don't have that in front of me, but I can get that to you.
Okay.
The reason I wanted this pulled for further discussion is when we talked about Envision in the work session, it was only related to the curriculum itself. We did not discuss, to my knowledge, making it a six-year contract. We didn't talk about being a phased-in approach, to my knowledge. So, you know, to me, if I'm voting on it, I would like to vote on it, but um-
I believe we did it both. I'm pretty sure, I'm ninety-nine percent sure we talked about that, the six-year purchase.
The board briefs did have that in, and I know Mr. Roush did talk about the phased-in approach and the rationale behind that.
So if we want no further discussion on that, I guess that's where we're at then, right? I mean, I just think we haven't even gotten results on the first Envision program we put in place, and we were told that would be two years. We're one year in. We have a whole nother year to go, and now we're putting in a six-year contract. So that means for the next six years, if this program isn't successful, then there's six years. I just think that's a long time to start a brand-new program. And I, you know, some of these other programs that do a phased-in and they go, okay, I think Andrea, and I'm not speaking for you, and tell me if I speak for them, but, you know, you talked about implementing and you said, well, we can kind of do two things and we can kind of, you know, work that simultaneous with this. There are some students that would benefit more from that approach than this approach. And, you know, I just think six years is a lot, and I don't understand with most programs, you can plug in a program and you start, so I don't know what the six years is for.
So I'm going to go ahead and handle that question quickly. So first was pre-k, I'm sorry, kindergarten through fifth grade was what we approved last year. And so this is a culmination of work looking at materials for the middle school and the high school six, so the six-to-12 program. And really, it's a bringing together of the whole district doing the same methodology. And then you don't change, especially in the areas of language arts and math, like one every other year or something like that. The amount of professional development has to be embedded to do this work. And so this is a set of materials that we're looking at right here. And so it's, it's been vetted. I mean, I know at the, I believe the high school, this is two years, guys have been looking at doing this work. And then I know the middle school's spent. So it's been a long process for that work to have happened, so.
I just would have liked to had the results from the first Envision implementation on the programming, because even look at Lucy Hawkins programs and the things that we've struggled with with that program, and they finally come out and added something to make that a more viable program. But I would have liked results from the first Envision program and say, look at the great successes. This is the data. Here's what we got to show you. This is, this is like the best of the best. And then walking in here is so much easier to do for me.
Okay. Any other, Larry?
Is any part separable? We have three payments, but let's say we decide that after year two that we, this is not for us. Can we separate that?
I would like, I don't, I cannot answer that definitively, but what I can say is there's, we're moving away from an integrated model where with math one, two, three, four, and we're replacing it with, I guess, a system that is designed in a phased-in approach that's designed to be completely different at the high school level. So it, it would, I would say it would be very detrimental to stop the process and go back. I do also want to add that the high school has enough materials to go forward with the courses that they're going to continue to teach for two years, but those materials are, they have sunsetted. I think that's the correct term. They are no longer in publication. So the high school has made preparations all year to make do to teach the two remaining integrated courses for this coming year without, you know, with materials that are no longer in publication.
So how does that play to Tom's question of are, is this replacing if the other program is going to be continuing through the years? And you just said they're going to be continuing with what we're doing with the current, I'm just trying to reconcile the two, when they answered your question and how that-
It sounds like we'd have to pay to upgrade if they're sunsetting the current system.
There is no. They have, they have ceased that curriculum.
Okay.
You know, and what I can say is that from the, from Ed Reports, it was a national consortium of math teachers and professionals. Envision is the only K-12 material that meets all of their indicators. To be honest, nothing, nothing else comes close from a national level. So it's heavily vetted at the national level, and it was vetted at the local level with our, with our math professionals and-
Well, certainly our math test scores need to improve dramatically because they've really, really been-
And if I can, I'm sorry, Tom.
But when we commit to a six-year and this doesn't do it, it's, you know, we're committed for six years.
I'm circling back to that, Darla. I apologize. I haven't read this specific agreement line by line, but I know in our previous agreements with Savvas, there is an opportunity if either party is unsatisfied with the performance of the program, there is a way to initiate discontinuing the agreement.
So what's the cost?
It would be determined at what point you notify them.
So you could get reimbursed on some of the five-hundred thousand we put out?
I doubt we would get reimbursed, but it would, like I said, I haven't read this specific agreement, but in other agreements we've had with Savvas for curriculum, there has been a way to terminate the contract, provided you give a certain amount of notice.
Mary, anything?
I think that we've gotten some data regarding the system, like when we've had our data study meetings with Andrea leading us. We've been able to see how this has been implemented in our lower grade levels, and we've been able to see some preliminary results in what that has been impacting in our math scores. And then when our math team at the high school came in and did their presentation, those teachers that have been piloting this program also gave us their anecdotal data and how their students have been responding to the lessons and how they as teachers were able to kind of meet the needs of their students more dynamically when the tools in this curriculum are more versatile and easier to access. So I feel like we might not have hugely robust data with like hundreds and hundreds of students over years and years and years tracking. However, with the data that has been presented, I feel that we have seen some positive results so far.
Scott?
Yeah, I'd like to say I also think along the lines of what you were saying, Tom, and I have concerns over the math scores as well. I'm glad that we're trying something innovative and new. We have clear goals that we have set for the president in this area, and I look forward to seeing how it does.
Yeah, just additional comment, and I'll give you some numbers. Eighth grade M-step, less than fifteen percent proficient in two thousand and three. So something needs to be done. Little bit concerned about six years, but we obviously need to make a change.
Carrie?
I agree. Just move forward with Envision.
We have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
No.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. First reading of board policy, Superintendent Shaw.
All right, thank you, sir. So when it comes to board policies on the first reading, it's a discussion only. And so the policies that were brought forward for updates were from Neola, and they are Policies 1240, Evaluation of the Superintendent, 2410, Prohibition of Referral or Assistance, 2414, Reproductive Health and Family Planning, 2623, Student Assessment, 6320, Purchasing, 6321, New School Construction and Renovation, 6325, Procurement Federal Grants and Funds, 6350, Prevailing Wage, 6520, Payroll Deductions, 8390, Animals on District Property, 8400, School Safety and Information, and the last one was 8800, Religious Ceremonies and Observances. So as a first reading, it is a discussion only for the board, and then from there, a second reading would occur in adoption at the next scheduled board meeting. So with that, I turn it back to you, sir. Discussion?
I do have concern with the purchasing policy of 6320, and only, and I think in an express course that we do discuss procuring of supplies, materials, and equipment in excess of a certain amount of money, twenty-five thousand, et cetera. But however, we neglect to put in there the procurement of services. So in other words, if we want to purchase something that is an item, we might have to have it bid out, et cetera, if it's over twenty-five thousand. However, we could spend a hundred thousand dollars on a service and have no bidding, nothing done at all. To me, that's a flaw in the system if the purchase, or I'm sorry, the purchase, the purpose of this purchasing is to save money. So to me, it just does not make a lot of sense. I would like to see the word service inserted in there as well.
So as a discussion from our, when we went over the board policies, the policy was written and meets the, it came right from misproposed law right there. So is that, and so that would make it more restrictive policy than what even state law would require.
Oh, yeah, I totally agree. It would. But again, if the purpose is to save money and to be accountable to the taxpayer, it does not make a lot of sense that we could spend a hundred thousand dollars on a service, get no bids, no accountability. But if we spend twenty-five thousand on an item, we have to have bids, et cetera. That's what makes no sense to me from a rationale point of view.
If I may, I don't think that the main purpose of the policy is actually to save money. It's to ensure that we aren't engaging in activity that would provide conflicts of interest. And the policy does not preclude, however, doing an RFP process for bids less than a hundred thousand.
Any, any reasonable point is that in the second paragraph, it says, "All procurement transactions shall be conducted in a manner that encourages full and open competition in accordance with good administrative practice and sound business judgment." So to me, they're talking about what's good practices, what's going to save money, what's going to be competitive, et cetera. So if we block out services, again, we kind of defeated the purpose of the policy here.
Correct me if I'm off mark here, but the board has a couple of functions. One of the functions is policies, but another function is financial, to oversee the financial viability, to oversee the money, making sure everything is being spent according to, I don't know, you pick the verb or whatever. So that would play into why this policy would affect the board because it is financial.
Actually, we actually had that word service inserted prior to going to Neola. So we'd had inserted that before because, again, to us as a prior board, it just made no sense that we could spend four times as much on one item, i.e. services, than an item without getting any kind of bids, et cetera. So that's why we're using this is probably going to the early two thousand.
Sure. So Larry, what's your recommended change?
Oh, I would insert the word, see after the first paragraph, procurement of all supplies, materials, I would put services and equipment. I would insert the word services.
For how much? What kind of amount?
Oh, I think everything else should flow.
Okay.
So no change in that, just add the word services?
So just adding the word services in the Mary first sentence?
Yeah, that's it.
I think you need to add it.
Oh, do we, wait.
There's a couple places.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I think there's a couple places that would need to be added.
And then the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph is, and I know we outlined this one time. I forgot all the items.
So yes, one of the functions is though to, for us to make sure that we are doing our job as administrators if, for services, if it's multiple quotes, looking at multiple vendors. I would, again, I caution that making a policy more restrictive than what is required by law is a, is not a prior, a good spot to be. I also say to you that we already struggle at times getting things approved. And if we have a service that we need to have done and to bring it back, have to bring it into the boardroom, our work sessions are already loaded and to have to, and to bring in all of our services with all the other items that are getting laid on our work sessions, practicality comes into play of can that even be, can we actually functionally do that?
Well, I mean, I would point out that in May, I think we only had one meeting as opposed to normally we have two. So I mean, we have a whole meeting there that we could devote just to services if we had to. But I mean, that's not going to happen. I mean, how often do we have services that exceed the twenty-five thousand dollar? I mean, it's not burdensome, in my opinion, at all. And I mean, I'm, I'm free if we want to have special meetings. We do have special meetings for certain things. Just include that in the package. So I mean, it's not, not a big item just to have three bids under to whatever number we have to do.
Well, we have this-
If the taxpayers got to put this, you know, we should be accountable to them. We don't want to just waste their money because we want to educate our students, so.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that our administration staff is wasting our money.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
You'd less than not put that out there.
This is, this is, this is a policy that would help the administration save money, help the whole school district save money, and benefit the taxpayers. I mean, how could you not be in favor of that?
I think it might stranglehold them. I don't know.
Well, I mean, doesn't do, when we do the bids for the construction, when we do the bids for any item that we purchase, it doesn't constrain them. I mean, it's not that constraining. I mean, how many, really, how many services do we have over a hundred thousand dollars?
How many services do we have over twenty-five thousand dollars?
Not over a hundred, over twenty-five.
Andy, I'm going to buy you something, like a lollipop or something, if you have that answer.
There's not a chance. She can answer, or he, or, no.
I just want to bring up-
Because Dave, I know in our department, there was a lot of times, there were services.
There's times where you have to make a quick decision where, like, I'll give you an example, at the field, we had to extend some tunneling. We had to have, I think Tim Toma's going to come in and excavate quickly. We do get multiple bids, though. I will tell you this, I know from my department, several times, Tim, I need three quotes. Nope, I have three quotes. But to have to go to the board, it could cause some situations where when we have to, somebody flushes toys down the toilet, and that could be up to twelve thousand dollars to come and power walk, like they have to flush that out, camera check it. I mean, those type of things do come up quite a bit. So I would just, I totally agree with accountability, and that's why we include those in board briefs, because sometimes we have to do it quickly, but I want you to be aware of what we're spending the money on. But there is times where that, that cost does creep up a little bit when it's a service, and it's got to be done quickly because Waterloo was flooding, asked Mrs. Flynn. We had to get him out there because there was like a Darth Vader toy or something was flushed down it. But if you don't-
That can be said for anything, Dave. I mean, we might have to do an emergency purchase. There are exceptions in our policy for emergencies.
Right.
I mean, nobody says we're going to give-
What if we changed it to fifty thousand?
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, just go along with whatever, not the policy, just insert the word services.
I just remember when we're talking about time, we did set aside the board the second Monday of the month for any kind of stuff that comes up that we can throw on those. And they're not time-elemented. I mean, you know, I know nobody wants to sit there for three, four hours, and I'm not suggesting that, but I'm saying that's once a month, you know, and if we need to put stuff on there, we did set that time about. And as far as I know, we're not really using them too much.
And like, Dave, I mean, if there is an emergency, I mean, you know, we can always go into the emergency paragraph, which is fine.
I totally agree, Larry, and I, and I have used that. But what my caution is, is that emergency starts to get really gray, where technically, did we have to do the grading at the high school? If it doesn't rain, it would go okay. But, you know, so that's where, could we wait until we got three quotes and got board approval? Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't.
But then what's in the emergency and what's not?
That's where it gets-
That right there would be up to the board.
That's why you just set an amount, you just set an amount, you deal with it. Right. You set an amount and you just follow it and you deal with it. And if there's an emergency that comes up, there's an emergency clause in there that doesn't tie your hands. But anything that is not a must-do-it-right-now, the house is burning down, have to have it, there is a clause in there for that. Everything else is, hey, let's look at it.
I know when it used to be four thousand, it was really hard because now contractors won't even come out for four thousand dollars.
No.
I mean, it took us almost three months-
I don't think it's four thousand dollars.
No, but it used to be in the worst.
Yeah.
It used to be.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we're not at that right now, so.
We want to pick a number that I think like Mr. Shaw said, that doesn't-
Isn't there a number written in the policy already? The number's already in there.
What number is in there?
I think it's twenty-five thousand.
I think it's twenty-five thousand. That's when you threw out the twelve thousand. I'm like, you're way under threshold.
Yeah, I just, I just want to throw out there that-
Thank you.
Larry, I agree with your reasoning. I'm just trying to find the emergency clause and concerned a little bit in that this policy does give bidders the ability to protest decisions and so forth. So that would then apply to services.
Yeah, that would be for everything.
Right.
Yeah, that's for everything.
Better for everything, right?
Yeah. I just want to be accountable to taxpayers, but if we're spending a hundred thousand dollars of their money.
Right, but we have to make sure the way we're wording this, we have been.
And I heard the number, hundred thousand, I heard twenty-five thousand, but I don't see that in here except for in the line that says-
Right.
In excess of the dollar amount provided by the state statute.
State statute's twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, is that number?
That's what I thought.
Well, it's twenty-five, it's, no, it's twenty-five something, something because it goes up each year.
Every year.
Level every October.
And that's, that's set by the state. Yeah.
Yeah. Scott, the emergency is under general provisions. If you look under there, second paragraph.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So who defines it as an emergency? Says superintendent. Superintendent? Yep.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to.
It says goods and services.
I get what you're trying to do, Larry.
Yeah.
So services is already there?
We got it in one place.
It's everywhere, huh?
Add it to the rest, yeah. All right, so that got us past which one?
So, uh, through a common, uh, conversation that's been had, um, we will take sixty-three twenty purchasing and make, and, uh, and review it. It'll be in board briefs for you this week. So you can see that we've made sure that it's added at the appropriate location so that it reads, uh, clearly that word services.
Any other ones?
Thank you.
Yes, I have, um, twenty-four fourteen reproductive health and family planning. During the work session, it was discussed, um.
Which, I'm sorry, which one is it?
Twenty-four fourteen. So at the work session, it was discussed that we. Oh, one, mine's like one fifty-four. Oh, you're looking at the one with private changes. Yeah.
One fifty-four?
One fifty-four or one eighty-four or one eighty-seven, whatever. Yeah. So, um, during discussion on this, this indicates that K through twelve, if teachers, if teachers are teaching HIV and AIDS through K through twelve. The other policy states that, that we, I mean, the other motion we just passed with the board was HIV and AIDS videos would be starting at the sixth grade only. So during this conversation, Andy said, well, hey, you know, we might, we'll have to come back and change this policy. And I understand that, but the concept goes the other way. We just passed the motion at sixth grade. I think that this policy needs to support that motion and it needs to start at sixth grade.
Is this the one with the teachers, the training?
The training.
And we will not be teaching.
Second grade teacher that was going to move to eighth grade, we didn't have to do all this other craziness?
Well, it's.
If I recall the conversation correct.
That was a conversation, but there's nothing to stop any teacher from being trained. It is if it's going to be taught K through twelve. We read that several times. And so if it's K six and above, then I would like this policy to match that motion and say six and above. That way they match.
Is that paragraph three?
Yes, paragraph three. I understand that it talks about HIV and AIDS. It, it talks about HIV and AIDS. Sure.
This policy is not talking about the curriculum that we would have to approve. It simply states each person who teaches K to twelve students about these topics shall have training in these topics and how to teach them to young people.
Correct.
And this is just pulled directly from the state statute that if you're going to teach this in these grade levels, you have to be trained.
Okay, but we are not teaching that in those grade levels. So why do we want a policy that says we're going to teach it to younger than sixth grade when we already just passed that it's only going to be sixth grade and above?
That's not what it says.
It says each person who teaches K through twelve students. So if you're teaching K students, you're teaching K students. What I would like it to read is each person who teaches sixth to twelfth grade students on this, on HIV and AIDS will be trained. Also, any teacher that would like to be trained on it for any future job moves can be included in the training. I don't want to exclude any teacher from a training. That's not my suggestion. But my suggestion is to ensure that, um, we are following the sixth grade and above.
So that actually doesn't solve the, the issue I think you're going for because what that would do is say that if you teach sixth grade and above, you need training, but if they ever change the other policy to say kindergarten, you don't.
No, because it, it, you would still have to need the training.
No, you wouldn't.
Well, if we have to adjust one policy, we always have to adjust two at this point.
No, we don't. And we wouldn't the other way.
So why don't we adjust the policy when it changes? Right. And then currently it's at sixth grade, so it cannot be taught less than sixth grade and that would suffice that. No.
That would be us approving a curriculum to teach. That's not part of this policy.
This is, so I, I guess I'm misunderstanding because this is about HIV and AIDS and those videos we approved were HIV and AIDS.
You're trying to connect policy to curriculum right now.
No, I'm connecting the approval of the videos that we approved.
Which is curriculum.
For HIV and AIDS. We, we had to approve that.
Right, that's curriculum.
Okay, and we said it would be six through twelve.
Which is curriculum.
Right.
Right.
This policy says.
Policy, yeah.
Right.
So if we just take.
I don't understand what.
K to twelve, then it just says any person who's teaching these topics will have the training.
Which is controlled by the other policy.
This is about.
Which is controlled by the other policy, right? And it can't be the under-sixth grade for HIV and AIDS. Okay. Well, we can't make a motion from this point.
I'll take care of it from there. So in your board briefs, policy twenty-four.
Thank you for the solution there, Carrie.
Will, uh, be presented to you. You'll see that in board briefs right there and with that adjustment.
Are there any other ones? All right, we're moving on. This brings us back to strategic plan. Superintendent Shaw?
So I appreciate that. Um, recommendation to move to approve the strategic plan service agreement with Monroe Public Schools and Hanover Research. Uh, we've had lots of conversations on this. Hanover Research would be the company that would come in, work with us on our strategic plan. Um, the, what's being presented to you is for, it's a, um, a three-year, uh, workup. Uh, sorry, four years right here. And the first year is a hundred and ten thousand and then second year, uh, that's for advisory queue and workshops. Next year is a focus group, uh, work and then, uh, also then following after that for the next, uh, sorry, four years after is advisory and then custom research. So the total price is, uh, three hundred and sixty thousand. Year one is a hundred and ten thousand, year two is a hundred thousand and years three, four and five are fifty thousand each. And that's paid out in general fund.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve that the strategic plan, uh, service agreement between Monroe Public Schools and Hanover Research be, uh, approved as presented.
Is there support? Discussion?
So this is a contract between now and twenty twenty-nine?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Why do we need to do a five-year?
So by doing the five-year, it just, it keeps the, it's back to the consistency of working alongside of this company so that when, uh, we've got the strategic plans in place and we come back and we're reviewing it, they're coming alongside of us. It also allows us to do, um, the research projects that may come out of this work. And then that advisory work that was last three years is, uh, is advisory and, and research. So it, it just allows us that ability to continue to move, uh, uh, really progressively more forward. We think in terms of, uh, the data and the, uh, not only the data, but that dashboard that we've seen and the work that's happened the other, in these other districts, it's a very robust program of work.
But it, that each one of those are billed at a hundred thousand dollars per year for the services for that particular year. So why can't we make a decision based on their first? Because that would be year what? Three and four.
Yep, so year one.
And so we would drop the price down two hundred thousand dollars at this point, run the program and then decide, do we want to go into the, um, other research and stuff?
But a strategic plan is meant to be in operation for at least five years and you're not going to, uh, go and do all the work and then say, okay, well, thank you. And you could have done it with, as we were talking about with other companies and not have any supports. What we look at here is we want to make sure we have supports built in, uh, for future years. And that's why that was presented in this manner is that we were, we're looking at and saying, okay, we've built that in and locked down a price too, so that way it, it won't grow, uh, after, over time.
So I'm a fan of Hanover. I think that they gave a great presentation. I think they have a lot of data. I think they have a lot of information and I think they got a lot of great planning. So I'm not suggesting that I think that anything that they would do would be good, but you never know until you do a service on what you get.
Any other discussion?
I mean, I'm in favor of strategic planning. Obviously, I think it's necessary, but it's a lot of money. I kind of like Darla's idea. If we could see how they perform before we commit ourselves to five years. And that's a hundred thousand dollars again is, oh, sorry, it's on. Hundred thousand dollars is just a lot of money every year. That's my reservations.
Okay. Tom? Well, we definitely need a strategic plan. We've been kind of wandering in the wilderness here for the last few years. Yes, we have. Out in the weeds. And obviously demographic keeps changing here in Monroe. Um, enrollment drops, uh, tax base is changing. So, um, I know it is a lot of money, but I think, uh, they did give a very good presentation. I think they have the, uh, the skill sets, the capability, the resources, so, yeah, it is a lot of money, but, uh, I'm willing to support this. Carrie?
I agree.
Scott?
It's less money than hiring a specialist to come in and do it. And it's a proven commodity.
Mary?
What I have been thinking has already been said.
Okay. Roll call please, Jamie.
Dr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries. That takes us to Trojan Build number six, Superintendent Shaw.
All right, so Trojan Build number six is, uh, up for approval tonight. And it's a request at Monroe High School Construction Trades Program, uh, to subcontract and purchase materials as outlined in the attached expense schedule for the Trojan Build Home Six. Costs for this project, uh, are two hundred seventy-nine thousand, seventy, seven hundred dollars. Uh, with additional contingency, contingency of thirteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Project's total costs are not to exceed two hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, as a little bit of caveat, this is and will be a two-year build. And so, uh, we're really looking at the work that Tom and his kids are doing out there. They're doing a phenomenal job, but we really need to put this over a two-year to not, uh, one, wear out our instructor. But two, we also are working alongside, uh, with the kids on, uh, the construction of the CTE building also on the, on the grounds.
Motion?
I move to assert the request for this two-year build, that's the Trojan, Trojan build, Trojan home build, number six.
Support? Discussion? Roll call please, Jamie.
Dr. Barron.
Absolutely.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
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 Mrs. Williams. Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries. That takes us to ATI contract, Superintendent Shaw.
Thank you, sir. Uh, recommend to move to approve the contract between ATI Holdings LLC and Monroe Public Schools effective August first, twenty twenty-four. And that contract is, it's a one-year contract for a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. And that is for one and a half trainers. That one and a half trainers, one trainer at Monroe High School. The other half would be at Monroe Middle School and would be present during all football practices and all home events.
Is there a motion?
Founder to approve the contract with ATI.
Support? Support. Discussion? Roll call please, Jamie.
Dr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachtenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Takes us down to exempt administrators' contract, Superintendent Shaw.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I move to approve the administrative contracts for Cindy Flynn, uh, Terry Joseph, David Mallopsy, David Payne and Cassandra Shook as recommended and presented.
Is there a motion?
Um, I move to approve the administrative contracts for Cindy Flynn, Terry Joseph, David Mallopsy, David Payne and Cassandra Shook as recommended.
Is there support? Discussion?
My concern is a three-year contract. Uh, I think it's quite lengthy. And the problem that we could come up with is about if somebody ever decided that, uh, their performance was not satisfactory, so to speak. And, uh, we decided that we just couldn't live with that person. I mean, they're still here for another three years. And it's a rotating basis. So I mean, you never get rid of that three years. So no matter what kind of service they perform or don't perform, the bottom line is is that you're stuck with a three-year payout that they are entitled to and they really don't have to do anything for those last three years. And there's nothing we can do about it because we're stuck with that. To me, that's not very wise. I mean, plus, I mean, you know, don't forget that most of these people have tenure rights as well and, uh, we just can't eliminate them. So, I mean, they would have certain rights in the school system as well. So to have three years plus, again, let's say they have a two-year improvement plan. So we're dealing with five years with a non-satisfactory performance. I mean, what kind of a s- system can you run if you can't get along with the employees and you can't get rid of them? You're just stuck with them. Then you double pay, you have to buy them out. It's the only option. So to me, it's very costly. So if we're paying a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars per year, times three, figure that out. Plus we got Bennys that go along with this. So I mean, that's a very, very expensive proposition that we'd get into. I mean, currently we have one year that's been working well. We've had it for many years. I see really no reason to change. It's not that we're not getting qualified candidates because I think we have a great staff here and it seems to be working well. There's really no reason to change to something that could put the board in a very detrimental position. So I would very much oppose the three-year contract. I would, uh, one year is fine, you know, like we had before. I think they have a right to that because we just should just fire them. But I mean, you know, three years is way too long. It's something we've never done before, never went to three years.
Carrie?
We've talked about this a lot in closed sessions, but, uh, I believe that a three-year contract will keep the people that we know are doing a great job, um, from going somewhere else. I think if we only, um, allow for a one-year contract, that they're going to go search for another district that will offer them a two-year or extension and, um, maybe a sign-on bonus and we're going to lose some great people. Obviously, if we lose people at the top, we're going to lose people down the, it's going to trickle down and we're going to be converging staff, um, valuable staff. So I recommend it as, uh, as written.
Tom? Yeah, I understand Larry's concerns, um, but I also understand there's, there's an issue that could complicate retirement benefits. That's what this, I believe, is all about. Which is what's really driving this. So, um, and if I understand what Andy had said during earlier discussion, maybe a compromise would be a two-year contract that would alleviate some of Larry's concerns and yet meet the requirements so that we don't screw up somebody's retirement or at least delay it. It sounds like if we don't do this, if they could potentially delay their retirement, uh, benefits. Mary?
Um, I feel like, um, I contributed during our closed session, but, um, just the contributions about, um, ORS and all of that is also a really valid point to consider.
So, um, I agree. We got great staff. We want to keep great staff. I agree with Larry and Tom. I think that, you know, through our discussions, we came up with some viable, maybe alternatives or ideas that could work as well. It would meet the obligations of, of, um, what, ORS?
Yep.
And it also could alleviate some of those long-term payouts, um, and the recurring, um, that Larry was talking about. So, you know, during those discussions, I, I just wish it would have, um, you know, been considered.
Scott?
I support this for a multitude of reasons, several of which have been mentioned here. I'm going to add one. Many of our administrators come from faculty and staff positions where they have tenure. And I can't help but wonder how many more people would pursue administrative positions who are very good at what they do, uh, but choose not to do so because they do not want to leave a tenured, uh, position or role. And this would allow more flexibility and, uh, support in doing so, even if they moved into something with a probationary, uh, period and then moved into something like this where they had a three-year contract. So I'm just going to throw that out as well.
We have a roll call please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
No.
Mrs. Myers.
No.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
No.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Yes. I don't know if we carry or not carry. They carried? Okay. That brings us to Administrative Contract Extensions, Superintendent Shaw.
Ah, thank you. So we have our administrative contract extensions, so a move to approve the administrative contract extensions for Melissa Bell, Amanda Bomea, Emily Bundan, James Drew, Andrew Duncan, Michael Foley, Chet Hesson, Scott Hoppert, Kelly Lake, Laura Laverne, Holly Moore, Leo Morelli, Kevin Pilgrim, Steve Pulizzi, Kyle Reed, Timothy Salabine. I'm sorry, Salabine. I'm from Lenawee County, okay? There's Salabines over there. All right. Sorry, Tim. Angela Todora, Brittany Tylinda, Bryant Weems, and Andrea Wiley, as recommended for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the administrator's contract extensions.
Support?
Support.
Discussion?
Actually, we probably have no option. I mean, they're unionized.
Okay.
But it's nice, it's nice.
It's a one-year contract, yeah.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to Superintendent Contract. It's gonna read to move, move to approve Superintendent Contract Extension for Mr. Andrew Shaw as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the superintendent contract extension for Superintendent Shaw's presented.
Discussion?
So, I had requested this to be pulled from the agenda to go back to the work session. And the reason I did, when I read the contract, there's a lot of red lettering in it. There's a lot of strikeouts, there's a lot of crossouts. And they affect the board's, the board's position. And I think if we're going to do something that's gonna change the board's position, I can read those or I cannot read those, but it definitely changes the board position, and I almost find like I have no options now but to read them to make my point, which I thought should have been done in a work session, and not that that's not open as well, but I mean, there's other ways that we could have done this. And this is not the way I, I wanted this to be done, but in that contract, there's language with the Board of Education, in sole discretion and with or without cause, may decline to extend the contract for an additional period. That was removed. That is no longer part of the contract. So I'm not sure why that got removed.
A caution, we have to watch what we talk about in open.
That's why I wanted this pulled. I wanted this removed. I didn't.
I think you can talk about, as a matter of fact, superintendent's contract. It's totally open.
Okay.
I mean, that's not covered by.
Even a work session would have been a public session. I mean, either one of them's a public session. But, and then it said, no salary increase can occur without the board approval during the terms of this contract. That is also being removed. So there are two big board functions related to his wages, and the other one is related to the termination of the contract, and the board, those are being removed. I don't really understand why. I mean, the superintendent works at I don't know what the word to use. They say the pleasure of the board, of from the board, and I just don't know how they came to be to take that out.
Okay. Carrie? Tom?
Nothing really to add.
Big layer?
Again, the same problem we have here. We have a three-year contract that go into, that, you know, it's going to, I mean, it's going to really hamper our abilities to things. Now, for example, I mean, you know, we're gonna be stuck with three years no matter what happens, and at some point, even if our superintendent reaches the age of ninety and decides whatever not.
I hope he doesn't stay here when he's ninety.
No, he's gonna be here another three years, and this is a rolling three years. I mean, it never ends. So I mean, we're stuck with this for three years. I kinda like the way that we had it before with a one-year and giving extensions, et cetera. It's not that we, I mean, there's certain things that we have to do. We have to evaluate. We have to tell them before April one, et cetera. I also note that as, has been indicated here by Darla, that, I mean, I think the statute indicates that the superintendent shall notify the board prior to February if they want, if he wants to be held to the clause for the three years. That's completely out. As Darla indicated, there's many, many things that are out of here which really hampers our position, and it really puts it at a really big detriment here, so. Again, for the same reasons, I really, I mean, not that, I mean, I love Andy, but I mean, it's nothing personal, but I mean, the bottom line is from a board's point of view, I mean, you're putting taxpayer at a terrible, terrible position. And we're, we're talking about, let's say, two hundred fifteen thousand dollars times three. I mean, we're talking about six hundred and, I can't even, six hundred forty-nine, forty-five? And that's a lot of money that we're putting there. So I mean, that is very detrimental, so I really can't support that as a stance.
Good. Mary?
I don't have anything to add.
Scott? Roll call, please, Jamie.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Can we get a response as to how all of those changes came bid to be? I mean, I, I'm just confused, like, there's so much red lettering on this contract. Like, you wouldn't think that we would have went through it in a work session, went through it, reviewed, discussed it or something. So we weren't sitting here at the end hour looking at all these details and saying, why is there no, why all this stuff?
So, section three is in regards to the extension of the contract, and because it is a three-year contract, and as Mr. Van Wachenova stated, it is a rolling contract, that's why those sections, extension, was pulled out, because it's an automatic. The board option is not there. As far as board option, no action under the provision, so that's why that, those items are pulled out. If you go to the back on page fourteen, there's still, you have the ability for termination, so there is still the termination clause that's in there for the board to, to use, so. That idea of, so, you know, the Board of Education, in sole discretion and with or without cause, may decline to extend this contract for an additional period. And so it, it goes back to then, you do have termination rights further back. And then in regards to the, we aligned the superintendent's contract to that of the ones that were just approved through the cabinet when it came to that salary schedule, and so that's when you're referring to number five, I believe, on that page right there. It was already, it was put in there to, just aligned to what we had done with the cabinet.
It's just that, you know, for the Board of Education, your contract, more than any other contract, is, is an operation of the board. Like, that is the board's responsibility, and that's the board's job. But the board had no input on this contract, as it's stated and as it's read right now, and therein lies my, my, my.
Concern?
Well, thank you. I was, I was thinking of, of something else, but yeah, and I also have.
Turned his opinion on it.
Yeah, yeah, and then the three-year as well, as we've discussed with the other ones. It's just unfortunate that it's going this way.
We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
No.
Mrs. Myers.
No.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
No.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. So did we, all right, yes. All right. That brings us to the CTE Suburban Purchase, Superintendent Shaw.
Okay. So, a few months ago, Leo was in and did a great presentation on trying to find, she, we got a beautiful grant for CTE, and so we, so Leo was working on trying to find a Ford van, and we shared a while ago. No luck on that unless we wanted to go and do a road trip to Seattle and back. Ford one, that was used. We're not taking volunteers, sir. And so, so we came back with that, these monies need to be expended before the end of this month, and so Leo's like, you know, we just, we need something that's an eight-passenger, nothing larger than eight, and it has, has towing capacities, it stays under the dollar threshold that of the seventy thousand-ish, I think about seventy thousand. So we went to the, she went to the local dealerships, and so we looked at Chevy, we looked at GM, and we looked at Ford, and those documents were provided to there, and so we are recommending to purchase a new twenty twenty-four Chevy Suburban from Allen Chevrolet Cadillac in Monroe. Michigan had a cost not to exceed sixty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. The purchase will be funded through sixty-one A CTE funds.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty-four Chevy Suburban from Allen Chevrolet Cadillac in Monroe, and a cost not to exceed sixty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars.
I'll, I'll support.
Any discussion? Leo, great job at finding something different, because I know the particular vehicle you were looking for, we were looking for and couldn't find one either. It's like their hen's tooth.
They're in your court.
Yes. We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. As we have no business, I will turn it over to Superintendent Shaw for a second round of superintendent comments.
All right, I'll keep this brief. First and foremost, a huge thank you to everyone when it came to the graduation setups. Both graduations, one at Monroe High School and then out at Orchard, were just amazing. Loved it all. The buildings, everything just looked phenomenal. I mean, Monroe High School was dialed in from the grounds all the way around. And then, it was, I loved it over at Orchard. Park lot had been redone there and been seal-coated, striped, and then, and that was a really special night. Thank you to everyone that stepped in afterwards on picking up over at Orchard, but two beautiful events. We're excited for this Thursday, June the thirteenth, at six P.M. at Monroe Community College and their emissions building cafeteria. We have Learning Bank, and so we're excited for that opportunity over there. The spectacular summer semester is going to be starting here Monday, the seventeenth. So kids got a one-week reprieve, and hey, we're back at it, and, but there is eleven hundred students roughly that are signed up at this point in time for this first session, and then we have three more sessions after that. Summer office hours, so a week from now, the central office right here, we'll go on to four-ten's, and so we'll stay on that until through the first week of August, and then we're back on five, five-day work weeks there. And then, summer meals, our summer meals and for kids program, lunch will be on the seventeenth, and Monroe Schools with, along with Sedexo Food Services are preparing for meetup and eat-up programs, Friday summer meals at several venues this summer, so lots of opportunities for our kids to make sure that they get their meals. So, big kudos to everyone this year. It was crazy when I thought about you guys, you know, how we give you guys the calendar and start to already think about, well, all right, we're planning for, you know, the start of the school year, and it was interesting, I just think about like these last, I felt like three days, but like these last two days already, that just all the planning that's going into effect to make sure that the twenty-four, twenty-five school year goes off smooth and is gonna be an exciting year, so that's all I have tonight, sir.
All right, do we have any public commentary on any topic?
No, we don't.
All right, does any board members have any comments?
I've got, just wanna raise something. I've already talked to Cindy about this. I got notified by Paula Kip about the summer childcare workers and their compensation relative to the advertised summer job applications, I think, in maintenance, which start at seventeen dollars, and even after, looks like after ten years, they're only at sixteen dollars, plus they have all these certifications to go through. So I think it's gonna be a struggle to fill those positions at those kind of compensations, but.
I think you might be right.
I think Cindy's working on it, so just wanted to let the board aware of that.
Thank you.
And I think a full-time maintenance start at twenty-one, so it's almost the same.
Yeah.
I have one comment. It was brought to my attention that Arborwood School gets very hot, that summer schools being held there, whichever, what is it, north?
The tiny building or the big building?
I don't know.
We have air.
And so they said they have air conditioning units that are rented out during that time, so where we, I thought we were putting air conditioners in the schools.
So air conditioners are at Raisinville Manor and at Waterloo, those went into those buildings.
So why didn't we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So Riverside also is aired up, and so Dave, help me right there, I know you guys are working on.
The reason we were gonna have Arborwood North, excuse me, at, not in use because of the air conditioners, but due to the construction with the kitchen and renovations, we moved it to north, so it's really leapfrogging around the bond work and the construction, but once it's all settled, there should be ample air conditioning buildings to handle summer school.
They, they just, they, they just kind of surprised me, and I'm like, you make a good point, if that's where they're using air conditioning the most.
We actually scheduled.
Why rent them?
We scheduled Raisinville to have summer school, but once we found out the construction and, and the hallway use, it, there was, it was better to move it to another building, so.
But we're not actually renting those every day, because don't we have like a bunch of these things?
Yeah, we don't. We have about ten left that work.
Oh, they died?
So.
Oh, we used them one year and they died?
No, no, it's been several years.
Their word was, they described them as, they rent these really big air conditioning units, so that was how it was explained to me.
Hopefully, this will be the last year that we have to rent any kind of air conditioner, because we have the middle school, which is not air conditioning, because of the high school bond work, and then we're at Arborwood North because of Raisinville work, so next year, I think, we'll be able to get them all into schools that have air conditioning. And Riverside in the transition.
This year, especially next week or so, yeah.
And I don't think we've had to rent them before. We did purchase a large quantity, but in the last two summers, quite a few have not made it through, so we're running down on the number of purchased ones that we have left is less than the number of rooms that need it, so seeing as this is hopefully the last year where we have to leapfrog around buildings that have air conditioning, we're looking at renting some to limp us through this, this last summer where we're having some locational issues.
Thank you.
I just had a few comments. Had you heard that the middle school has an awesome new dance club?
Oh, my God.
So as a, as a former history teacher, it is my job to impart culture as well, so I'll channel your nineteen nineties, early two thousand boy bands appreciation. And yes, we did a little NSYNC Bye 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 video to, to send our students off to summer.
You don't have to share it on the screen. I saw Cassie going to her computer, like, you're good.
So if you would like that, we can share that.
Oh, yeah, the middle school's Facebook.
Very cute.
I may, but I would just get a quick moment to celebrate the wonderful partnership between college and Monroe Public Schools. The upper-down program is phenomenal. Thank, I think Monroe Public Schools, they have come through to, we can talk about the strength of their busing program now to salvage part of that program, that's as far as I'll go into that, and thank you, thank you for that, and we'll have a lot of, a lot of busses from Monroe Public School, high school, students on campus, so we're excited.
We also appreciate the relationship with the college. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Well, easy.
Raise hands.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. All right, this meeting is adjourned.